Good afternoon, everyone. We're going to start our business meeting. Today's date is March 4th, 2025. The time is 2:00 PM. In attendance are Commissioners Eberlein, Duncan, and Matari. I'm going to call this meeting to order. We'll begin with a moment of silence. Okay, next up is the Pledge of Allegiance. JP, would you like to start us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal to its laws, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I'd just like to pull Item 4 for next week. It's just a time that needs to be changed in there.
Well, I very much appreciate you looking at these things. So unless there's an issue with pulling it. Okay. Public comment. All right. I'll take a motion on the meeting minutes.
I move that we approve Items 1 through 3 and 5, 6, and 6. I'm sorry, and 5 and 6.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Consent calendar?
I move we approves Items 7 through 11.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. And the payables list?
I move that we approve Item 12, Payables List, for February 24th through 28th, 2025, in the amount of $467,150.04.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Okay, on to business. Item 13, Bid Opening Bid Number 2025-01. This is for the High Track Waste Handler Dozer with Solid Waste. And it looks like we have one bid. Commissioner Duncan, you want to open that?
This is from Western States Equipment. Are there alternates, JP? Are there alternates or anything? What is it that you want me to read?
The only lines if you see a title page like this.
Yeah, just.
It should be, you've already read the bidder's name, so line A, B, and E.
Okay. This is for a 2025 Caterpillar D8 Waste Handler. The purchase price is $1,051,670.50. Delivery date, September 30th, 2025. Optional trade-in, do you want to know that? $40,000. So I move that we acknowledge the receipt of the bid and send it to Solid Waste and Legal for review.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up is Item 14, Financial Budget Purchase Approval for Prairie Bladder Replacement. This is with Solid Waste and John Phillips.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. John Phillips for the record. The Solid Waste Department is requesting the approval to move forward with fixing and improving the domestic water supply at the Prairie Transfer Station, which actually includes our irrigation as well. Apparently, all three bladders on some very large pressure tanks are non-functional and in need of replacement. They are about 15 years old, so they've been there since the building was constructed. It was also advised that we add a pressure transducer as well as associated VFD programming to the system to help prolong the life of the new bladders. The total cost of this improvement was quoted at $20,884.03. These costs were budgeted within the fiscal year 25 budget.
Any questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the purchase for the Prairie Bladder Replacement with Solid Waste.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, Item 15, Master Intergovernmental Cooperative Purchasing Agreement with Equalis Group. And this is with Building and Grounds. And we have Director Jeff Fuller. Are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Good afternoon, Commissioners. So before you is an agreement to join a purchasing cooperative called Equalis Group. And this would allow us to purchase the deaths that we've been talking about through Global if we do go that route. A little bit of kind of late-breaking news on that. Equalis, sorry, Global did send an email out this afternoon to the contract group that we've been working with that they would extend orders for 30 days without any increased costs through tariffs, because they don't want to lose, they don't want to lose business through the course of this while they're still trying to figure out what this is going to look like. So that still could be a viable option for us. I'll have more information on that. But in approving this agreement, this partially also answers the question that was asked during public comment this morning, where we would be purchasing through a discounted rate. So this is a nationally negotiated rate approved for government agencies. So that is buying the death at a significant discount through already pre-negotiated government rates that allows us to do that. There's no cost to join this, so it is just bringing this into our repertoire of availability to purchase through this cooperative, and Legal has reviewed this.
Thank you. Any questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the master intergovernmental cooperative purchasing agreement with Equalis Group.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, Item 16, Board Approval Request. This is for permits, building, mechanical, right-of-way with the City of Coeur d'Alene and our Building and Grounds. And Director Fuller, please.
Again, Jeff Fuller for the record. So before you for your approval are the permits with the City of Coeur d'Alene for the jail pod build-out. I mentioned to you last week at the status update that they did come in under budget, so we will have some cost savings compared to what we allocated for that. But based on the price of this, I need your formal approval so that we can cut a check to the City of Coeur d'Alene for the building permits.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the permits for the building, the mechanical, and the right-of-way with the City of Coeur d'Alene.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, Item 17, Board Approval Request. This is Change Event Number 100, Justice Building Pre-Action Sprinkler System for the Evidence Room with the BOCC. And we have David Mendez here.
David Mendez with Turner &amp; Townsend Hearing. This is an item that we talked about earlier today for keeping no water in the evidence storage area for the fire protection system. It's a, we're, there's two options in your packet. Option 1 was for a compressed air system. Option 2 is for a gas system. We're recommending Option 1.
Thank you. Questions? You just want to make a motion to go with the lower-cost system?
So I move that we approve Change Event 100 for the Justice Building Pre-Action Sprinkler System for the Evidence Room, Option 1.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, Item 18, Renewal of a Three-Year 700 MHz MOU with the North Idaho Day Surgery doing business as Northwest Specialty Hospital. This is with our 911 and Colin McRoy.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Colin McRoy, County Sheriff's Office, 911 for the record. This is the standard 700 MHz System Access MOU, Northwest Specialty Hospital. Specialty Hospital has some radios on the system for disaster preparedness and would like to continue utilizing those. And their MOU is up for renewal and your approval.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the three-year 700 MHz MOU with North Idaho Day Surgery, DBA Northwest Specialty Hospital, and 911.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, Item 19, Renewal of a Three-Year 700 MHz MOU with the Shoshone Ambulance Service District with our 911 and Colin McRoy again.
Commissioners, Colin McRoy again. Same MOU renewal, this time with Shoshone Ambulance Service District. Has some radios on the system to utilize for inter-agency communications, communications with the hospital, and would like to continue doing so. And their MOU is up for renewal and your approval.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the three-year 700 MHz MOU renewal with Shoshone Ambulance Service District.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, Item 20. Thank you. MOU Update, Spokane County Medical Examiner's Office with our coroner, and we have Dr. Duke Johnson here.
Thank you very much for your time. This is our yearly, or actually, our MOU with Spokane Medical Examiner for performing autopsies. And we had multi-year agreements with them, but we were notified by ICROM this year that basically we cannot indemnify other parties beyond one year. The Idaho Constitution prohibits a political subdivision from taking on more debt than appropriated during any specific budget cycle. So we had to change that agreement so that it was only based on an annual basis. And so even, this is basically an agreement between two political subdivisions of two states, so this agreement will still need to be submitted to the Secretary of State for review.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the updated MOU with Spokane County Medical Examiner's Office.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, Item 21, Grant Use Agreement, Coeur d'Alene Fire Department, Office of Emergency Management. And do we have Andrea Littlefield on the phone?
Yes, we do. Do we want to do all the grant use agreements as a group? Or do you want me to do them individually?
Dave, what do you think?
I think she can present them all individually, serially. If you're going to make a motion, just state which items you're approving in the motion.
Okay, so item numbers?
Yeah, if it's more than one item, just state which items you're approving in the motion. I think that'll be sufficient.
Okay. All right. Andrea, you can go ahead and explain them all to us.
Okay, so you want me to do them individually?
Well.
Explain to them individually?
All together and then make one motion.
You can do them all together.
Okay. This is Andrea Littlefield for the record. Cooten County Office of Emergency Management is requesting that the Board of County Commissioners approve the grant use agreement for Cooten County. And I will list them all. Coeur d'Alene Fire Department, Coeur d'Alene Police Department, Hauser Lake Fire Protection District, Spirit Lake Fire Department, Spirit Lake Police Department, and Worley Fire Protection District. And this is to purchase equipment with 2024 State Homeland Security Fund.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions?
Not a question, but just kind of a statement. If the Board might be more aware of how the group appoints or distributes these funds every year, kind of would be helpful to us in budget season, just kind of an overview explanation that maybe could come to a status update or something.
So to come back at a separate time?
Yep.
Would that be, would that work for you, Ms. Littlefield?
Yeah, that's fine. So you want me at a status update to explain how we distribute our SHSC funds?
Yes, please.
So why don't we plan on next Tuesday at 10:00 AM?
If that works. We can approve them today.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I understand, but the explanation afterwards.
As Deputy Clerk, just for my clarity, could you include the item numbers?
I will.
Was this 21 through 29?
It's 21 and then 25 through 29.
Okay, that's what I suspect. Thanks.
Okay. Motion?
I move that we approve Item 21, which is the grant use agreement for Coeur d'Alene Fire Department, and Items 25 through 29, which is the same grant use agreement with Hauser Lake Fire Protection, Coeur d'Alene Police, Spirit Lake Fire, and Spirit Lake Police Department, and Worley Fire Protection District.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion 21 and 25 through 29 carry. Next up is Item 22, Grant Application Number FY26, Land Owner Grant Hazard Fuel Treatment Fire Smart Grant, Idaho Department of Lands, in the amount of $500,000 with no match requirement, in the Office of Emergency Management.
Yes, this is Andrea Littlefield for the record. Cooten County Office of Emergency Management is requesting that the Board of County Commissioners approve the grant application for the Idaho Department of Lands, FY26 Land Owners Assistant Fire Smart Grant. This grant is for 150-plus acres of hazard fuel treatment work in the Wolf Lodge, Cataldo, and Harrison area. The grant is for $500,000, and it has no match requirement.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the grant application for fiscal year '26, landowner grant for hazardous hazard fuel treatment in the Fire Smart Grant program with IDL in the amount of $500,000.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Item 23, Grant Application Number FY26, HFR Hayden Community, Hazard Fuel Treatment Fire Smart Grant with Idaho Department of Lands, in the amount of $240,000 with no match required. And again, Ms. Littlefield.
Yes, this is Andrea Littlefield for the record. Cooten County Office of Emergency Management requests that the Board of County Commissioners approve the grant applications for the Idaho Department of Lands, FY26, HFR Fire Smart Grant. This grant is for 50-plus acres of hazardous fuel treatment work in the Chicken Point, Gem Shores, and Sunset Beach areas of Hayden. The grant is for $240,000 and has no match requirement.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the grant application for fiscal year '26, the HFR Hayden Community, which is the Hazard Fuel Treatment Fire Smart Grant with IDL in the amount of $240,000.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, Item 24, Grant Application Number FY26, WSFM Worley Community Hazard Fuel Treatment Fire Smart Grant with Idaho Department of Lands, in the amount of $240,000 with an in-kind match administrative time and community outreach efforts of $24,000, again with the Office of Emergency Management. Ms. Littlefield.
Yes, Andrea Littlefield for the record. Cooten County Office of Emergency Management is requesting that the Board of County Commissioners approve the grant application for the Idaho Department of Lands, FY26, WSFM Fire Smart Grant. The grant is for 90 to 100 acres of hazardous fuel treatment in the Worley Community. The grant is for $240,000 and has a $24,000 match. This match will be met with administrative time and community outreach events, along with the Worley Fire District staff time.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the grant application, FY26, WSFM Worley Community Hazard Fuel Treatment with the Fire Smart Grant and IDL in the amount of $240,000 in-kind match and as $24,000.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, Item 30, Board Approval Request Airport Use Authorization, Coeur d'Alene Aviation Events and the Airport. Ms. Stevenson or Mr. Patterson?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Kim Stevenson with the airport for the record. We are requesting authorization from the Board for Coeur d'Alene Aviation Events LLC to use the Coeur d'Alene Airport for an airshow and expo in June of 2025. They will be handling all the coordination and the operation of the event. And the airport will support the event with normal airport operations and our services.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the airport use authorization with CDA Aviation Events for their June 28th event.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, Item 31, Waste Site Agreement, Northwest Grading Inc. And this is with the airport and Ms. Stevenson.
Kim Stevenson again for the record. This agreement with Northwest Grading is for them to use airport property for stockpiling of excavated materials and screening topsoil as they work on the Ramsey Road Extension project. They are doing that project for the City of Hayden, and we are requesting approval that they can utilize this area of the airport.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the waste site agreement with Northwest Grading Inc. at the airport.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, Item 32, Property Use Agreement with the City of Hayden, 10905 North Ramsey Road. This is with the airport and Ms. Stevenson.
Commissioners, if I may, can we combine Items 32, 33, and 34? They are all property use agreements for three various parcels that front Ramsey Road. And the only difference is the address and the exhibits that go behind the agreements.
That's fine with me. It's fine with everyone.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, okay, thanks. The property use agreements were presented to us by the City of Hayden, which allows them to access to the property for the sewer and water installation and construction, and driveway reconstruction and sewer service at the location of 10885 Ramsey Road, which is Cooten County Search and Rescue, 10905 Ramsey Road, which is Cooten County Parks and Waterways, and 1662 West Wyoming Avenue, which is Cooten County OEM. And so they're requesting approval for these to continue the project, and they're actually ready to get started back up with this.
Thank you. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I just, Kim, are SAR, Parks and Waterways, and OEM aware of this?
Oh, yes, I apologize. Yes, I got approval from Sergeant Miller and from OEM as well. And I had our attorney approve, review all the agreements.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? You want to do a motion for all three?
Sure. I move that we approve the property use agreements with the City of Hayden for 10905 North Ramsey, 10885 North Ramsey, 1662 West Wyoming.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries for Items 32, 33, and 34. Next up is Item 35, Board Approval Request Offer Letter to FAA for Land Purchase with the airport and Ms. Stevenson.
Kim Stevenson again for the record. This is a follow-up from the discussion at Status Update last week, where we requested direction on the Parks and Waterways property. The first item is the offer letter to the FAA, formally offering 90% of the appraised value for two parcels at a purchase price of $1,044,000.
Thank you. Any questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the offer letter to the FAA for the land purchase.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, Item 36, Board Approval Request for the Warranty Deed for AIN numbers 319, 369, and 345, 184 with the airport and Ms. Stevenson.
Kim Stevenson again for the record. The warranty deed was prepared for the two parcels, all of AIN 319, 369, and a portion of 345, 184. That is the current location of the building that the county already owns. The airport has been operating out of it, but Parks and Waterways can move into that building, and we can vacate it. And so this just provides free and clear title to that property.
Thank you. Questions?
I have a question for Dave. Does it matter if we approve the warranty deed before we approve the resolution of purchase?
Probably do it the other way around.
Okay.
The purchase and then the deed.
Okay.
Okay, so you want to go to 37 and then, so let's go to 37, and we'll take care of that first and then go to 36.
We can do one.
Okay.
So Item 37 is Resolution 2025-19, Purchase of Real Property in Lieu of Continued Land Lease with Parks and Waterways and the Airport. And Ms. Stevenson.
Kim Stevenson for the record. This is Resolution Number 2025-19. And this will rescind Resolutions 2011-65 and 2011-66, which were essentially lease agreements with the county for Parks and Waterways and snowgrumers. So it's the real property at the address of 10905 North Ramsey and a portion of the adjoining parcel to the north. And again, the purchase price would be $1,044,000, 90% of appraised value, with the funds being returned to Fund 30, the airport fund, per the sponsors' assurances with the FAA.
Thank you. Any questions?
But I'll do both of those in one motion if you're all right with that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I move that we approve Resolution 2025-19,